Call to order for the Town of St. John, Town Council meeting for March 26th, 2025. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing? We'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as you remain standing for a moment of silence, just keep our country in mind. Thank you. Item three, roll call. Beth?
Mike Bobat.
President.
Christian Jorgensen.
President.
And Oster is absent. Wayne Pandina.
Present.
Gerald Swatz.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetinoff.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Item four, we're going to have a presentation. Billy, can you comment on this, please?
Yeah, so this is for TIF management report, and Greg Balsano is on from Baker Tilly.
Good evening, council members. Can everyone hear me okay?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and thanks, Billy. Yeah, my name is Greg Balsano, here from Baker Tilly, in place of Andy Mouser. I know normally is that your guys' meetings? He's out of the office this week. So wanted to just cover the TIF management report, get a brief overview. This is a report that's due by April 15th every single year for the Redevelopment Commission, and is required to be presented to the council, but no vote is necessary, no approvals. It's just a informational report on what happened during 2024. So again, this is looking at the prior year, and will get posted to the DLGF TIF Management Gateway Portal on or before April 15th. I'm going to share my screen real quick here with the And if you guys can see that here, this presentation, this is the TIF management report. Where we're at, again, is the April 15th deadline. We're kind of at the beginning of the year, so this is one of the first deadlines here for the RDC. And again, this is just reporting on 2024. As you all know, TIF is a capture of assessed value on what has increased in that area for those parcels from the time the area was created. So the incremental assessed value is the difference between the current net assessed value of those properties versus what that that base AV, the net assessed value was at the time the area was created. Kind of the purpose of TIF is to finance different infrastructure incentives, really encourage economic development in those areas. As a note, new businesses in the TIF area still pay their property taxes on their private investment. Looking back here at 2024, here were your RDC members in the year 2024. And the next two slides just kind of go through all of the different allocation areas that exist and will exist. Here we have the EDA 1, EDA 2, the Northwest and Southwest allocation areas, Orchard Gate, Sterling Gate, and then as well as a variety of allocation areas that have been established during 2024. Additionally, there were three new allocation areas created in January of '25. So this just kind of gives an overview of when these areas were established and when they're set to expire. I'm looking at high-level overview of the finances. So here in the year 2024, collected just over $1.1 million in revenue and about $940,000 of expenses. One of the larger expenses I want to point out here was $584,700, and that was for the 2018 redevelopment district bonds. So I wanted to make that bond payment, as you could see the kind of the details of the different expenses. And then your fund balances here, listed, you can see for each of the EDAs and the different variety of TIF funds that you guys have on hand. These are the end-of-year 123124 balances of those funds. Lastly, just looking at the current bonds that are outstanding. So we have this 2018 bonds that I mentioned earlier. And then in addition, there was a few bonds issued in the last two years that are kind of payable from a specific TIF, from that developer TIF. You can see those amounts there when those are set to expire. Those will begin payments here in the next few years. And then lastly, just want to hit on the parcel list. So there is a PDF that will, this file will be uploaded to the DLGF site that contains all of the parcels and the assessed value data for each of the allocation areas that existed for taxes payable 2024. Again, that's really all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think I'm good. That's pretty straightforward, Greg. I think everyone's pretty up to speed on everything. Any questions, anyone?
I just have one. Greg, is that the updated list after the pruning of EDA 1?
No, so that will, that, it is not, this is the prior year, so that will, that would go into effect for the pay 25 list. So the current year that is into effect, but this list will show what was prior to that.
Thank you, Greg.
All right. Thank you for that update. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'd like to, don't have it on the agenda, but I guess we'll call it Item 4B, the St. John Fire Department. And Billy, could you comment on that?
Yeah, so on March 14th, and I'll let Chief Adams go into detail, our guys responded to a call in Lowell. We were contacted by Chief Gamblin in Lowell about our crews and what they did, and I'll let Shane go into detail on that.
Good to see you tonight, Chief.
Good to see you guys. Thank you, council, for taking time out tonight, so we can recognize three of our men as far as the actions that they took on March 14th, when they responded down to Lowell. So at this time, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Zach Strubeck, firefighter paramedic Matt Eastel, and firefighter EMT Zach Ritt. So guessing this standing up there. So Fire Chief Gamblin from Lowell was going to try to make it tonight and do a little presentation, but unfortunately he's sick, so he apologized and said he couldn't make it. So he's been sick the last couple days, and he's been in bed. So he did send me a letter that he would like for me to read tonight. So I'm going to read his letter from him. "Thank you for your time this evening to speak to the council on a great performance that members of your fire department performed on the evening of March 14th. Lowell Fire Department, along with the Hebron Fire Department, was dispatched to a working house fire that originated from an explosion in the home. The house had been known to have a previous resident that had chemicals on site that, while by themselves are not immediately dangerous, but in certain quantities or stored with other chemicals and materials are highly dangerous during a fire. While en route to Lowell Fire Department through our central dispatch center was receiving multiple reports of a house, field, and surrounding area on fire with continued explosions coming from the home. These explosions were threatening the already injured at the home and people that were stuck on the highway in front of the property. A box alarm was called, which brought several surrounding agencies to help the Lowell Fire Department. St. John Fire Department acknowledged our need for help and sent an engine crew to aid us. It is the three members of the engine crew that I want to thank and acknowledge their dedication to a difficult and dangerous call. During this call, the St. John engine crew was tasked to help with getting water on the fire in dangerous proximity to the home. They, along with firefighters from Hebron, Lowell, and Cedar Lake, established the need to continue working while explosions continued to erupt in the home, threatening the safety of everyone on scene. However, they were not merely acting on bravado to continue at their post. They were assigned that duty as a hose line that was to be placed by the St. John and Lowell crew was to protect EMS services that were treating the injured and potentially keeping an area of egress open for other fire companies if the scene worsened any further. Ultimately, the efforts of the St. John crew and the other crews working together on scene were able to gain control of the fire and eliminate any further threat from the explosion. It is this dedication to their fellow firefighters that I made the request, the Fire Chief Adams, to nominate the responding crew for an acknowledgement honor that is bestowed by the St. John Fire Department. We at Lowell Fire Department know that we are all part of a fire family, and we would not hesitate to come to the aid of St. John in a momentous notice to ensure that we help protect each other's communities when the call comes. The St. John Town Council, St. John Fire Department, and IAFF Local 5136 should be proud of the actions of these firefighters, as we certainly acknowledge their professionalism at the Lowell Fire Department and are honored to call them brothers of our fire family. Thank you, Christopher Gamblin, Fire Chief Lowell Fire Department." So I'm just going to say a couple things. He pretty much covered all of it. I've been doing firefighting since 1995. I've never came across a scene like this. We never know what we're going to come across. We know a structural fire is obviously a high hazard. But this one was, I don't think a lot of us have ever seen. It's not very often that the Porter County Bomb Squad is called to the scene. So they actually re-responded, the ATF re-responded, and the ATF is actually doing the investigation. So that's what kind of house that they're dealing with. So tonight, I would like to recognize these three gentlemen with the meritorious conduct award. So just one last thing, and then you guys want to get pictures of your families, we'll call our behalf for pictures. So I'm glad everything worked out good. Like I said, we never know when we're done these calls, what, whatever can happen, you know, sometimes force laps like that. But I'm glad to get a job done, and you guys may at home safely to us and to your families. So, great job, guys.
Let's give them a round of applause.
If you have anything else to put up, we can get pictures of you later.
Good one, Jerry.
Sorry.
Billy, did you get a picture?
Yeah.
Hey, Shane. We got everyone with the council, we have to the families now.
To what?
Get everyone with the council.
Just go behind Napoleon. You have the Napoleon.
Yeah.
That's the best picture of the night.
Sure.
Go this way.
Hey, guys, you're not done. Hey, you're not done yet.
Forty pushers.
Yeah.
So the town council, like to join us?
My pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we thank you guys for your courage. Truly, good job, you guys.
Beautiful.
All right, go.
All right, listen, Fire Department, pictures.
Come on, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great.
I didn't know, I didn't know why the buffer was here.
Do you want to leave it?
No.
T-shirt?
I showered today.
I'm not uniform, that's okay.
You sure?
I don't know what you guys, sure.
Yeah.
It looks like Steve had an issue there, kid.
Ryan's trying to hide.
Thank you.
Let's go, man.
Early on, this crew.
Thank you, guys.
We really appreciate the St. John Fire Department. Thanks again, guys. Billy, did you want to do that now, or?
We can wait till you get stuff.
Okay. Moving forward in the agenda, item five, public comment. We have one person, Tom Holser.
Hawker.
Hawker.
Good evening.
I was close.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tom.
Tom Hawker, 12344 Forest Drive. I was looking over the website announcing plans for improvements on roads and trails, and it mentioned being in conformity with the requirements of ADA, the American with Disabilities Act, which is very good. And, but the current administration has imposed a lot of restrictions and obstacles to inclusivity. And could this policy of the administration impose obstacles and force you to change your plans for accessibility?
I wouldn't think so, Billy.
No.
With the engineers, what they've?
Again, we've briefly touched on that with our engineers.
Okay.
And the, the thought of the council, and speaking for all of them, is that we go ahead with our plans as.
Okay, so that wouldn't impose any penalties on the town?
Again, they're looking into that, and it's also legal also, but.
Okay, very good.
Nothing like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else for public comment? Thank you. Item six, approval of minutes. March 12th, 2025, Town Council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to have a discussion on the minutes, real quick. The, we used to do them word for word, now we're not doing that. And I'd like a correction to be made in those minutes for adjournment. They have Wayne Jorgensen made a motion to dismiss, and I think that should be changed. But I think, Billy, the, everything that's said in the meeting should be word for word like it was. So if we can get, was ever doing the minutes, do that, that would be great.
Sure would. Not a problem.
Thank you.
I would, I would disagree with that. That's not what minutes are.
Well, I, and I know.
Minutes are a review of what happened, not a word for word. So we don't have 14 pages of documents for minutes. Minutes are just what action happened.
We've had that discussion before, but it works out a lot better if the public looks at it and they make this mistake, you know?
They can watch the video.
I know. I'm just saying, that would.
My opinion.
Yeah. Well, you're entitled to it, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I make a motion that we pass the minutes and make that minor change, please.
So, support that. So my understanding is, are we going to readdress the minutes and have them?
Billy, take care of that.
I think I could, we could have a discussion on that. This is just the motion to approve it.
Yes.
Since it's only really a scribbler's error.
Okay.
That can be corrected.
Well, that can be corrected. Right.
The minutes would be subject to making the correction, but I think at this time it can certainly pass.
Okay. I have a motion.
Write it down verbatim.
You have a motion from, I need a second from Jerry.
I have a motion to pass the minutes with the scribbler's error being corrected. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, agenda items, financial matters of the corporation, requests to purchase. There are a total of six requests to purchase in the combined total of $81,429.93. Do I have a motion to approve the request to purchase?
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to read them, because I had a phone, two phone calls in the last couple of days about requests to purchase. So Boonder Electric for streetlighting was $5,366.43. Ferguson Water Works is for a, I believe it's two water meters for Franciscan that's going up on 41 for $5,951. The next one's Premier Trophies for two bronze plaques that are being made. Ray Heron, or O'Heron, I'm sorry, for Police Vest for $9,680. Universal Lighting for streetlights, and that was for Town Hall Police Department, Wall Street, Patterson, Weston Ridge, and Homestead Acres for $33,195. And streetlights and LED replacement for Greystone, Silverleaf, and Saddle Creek subdivisions for $22,337.50. And with that, I make a motion that the, that we pass that for $81,429.93.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero.
I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
I'll support that. So my understanding is, are we going to readdress the minutes and have them?
Billy, take care of that.
I think I could, we could have a discussion on that. This is just the motion to approve it.
Yes.
Since it's only really a scribbler's error.
Okay.
That can be corrected.
Well, that can be corrected. Right.
The minutes would be subject to making the correction, but I think at this time it can certainly pass.
Okay. I have a motion.
Write it down verbatim.
You have a motion from, I need a second from Jerry.
I have a motion to pass the minutes with the scribbler's error being corrected. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, agenda items, financial matters of the corporation, requests to purchase. There are a total of six requests to purchase in the combined total of $81,429.93. Do I have a motion to approve the request to purchase?
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to read them, because I had a phone, two phone calls in the last couple of days about requests to purchase. So Boonder Electric for streetlighting was $5,366.43. Ferguson Water Works is for a, I believe it's two water meters for Franciscan that's going up on 41 for $5,951. The next one's Premier Trophies for two bronze plaques that are being made. Ray Heron, or O'Heron, I'm sorry, for Police Vest for $9,680. Universal Lighting for streetlights, and that was for Town Hall Police Department, Wall Street, Patterson, Weston Ridge, and Homestead Acres for $33,195. And streetlights and LED replacement for Greystone, Silverleaf, and Saddle Creek subdivisions for $22,337.50. And with that, I make a motion that the, that we pass that for $81,429.93.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll support that. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries four to zero.
Number two, accounts payable voucher dated March 26th, 2025, representing payment for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of $1,736,927.61. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second for accounts payable? I did review it. So yes, it was the regular vouchers, right?
Correct.
Okay. I will second that.
Need to pay the bills. Any seconds?
Yeah, I did. I'll second it.
He was just having a discussion with Billy over a couple.
I don't have the paperwork here, but I did review it at home, so I just wanted to double-check, make sure nothing changed. So I will support it.
Being courteous.
Understood. Thank you, gentlemen. So I have a motion, I have a second. Jerry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number eight, ordinances and resolution. Number one, consider ordinance 1858 and ordinance amending salary ordinance number 1842, establishing a schedule of wages, salaries, and benefits for employees, fire, and police personnel, and town officials. 2025 salary ordinance on second reading. This is the second reading, gentlemen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero.
Mr. President, just so for everyone's information, that was for the addition of the IT personnel and the addition of the camp counselors for the summertime.
Thank you for that, Billy. Item two, consider ordinance 1859. Do you want to comment on that one too, Billy?
Yes. And Ashley Sarah also, she can go into a little bit more detail if you guys need. Those were some minor changes and correcting some of the links that were published in there, and a few scribbler's errors.
Okay. Item two, ordinance 1859 and ordinance amending ordinance number 1853 and ordinance amending Article 6 of the Town of St. John subdivision control ordinance entitled Stormwater Drainage and All Amendments thereto and repealing all town code sections and ordinance or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Do I have a motion? So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number three, consider ordinance 1860 and ordinance amending Town Code Section 2-152 entitled Emergency Medical Services Rates and Fees and repealing all Town Code Sections and Ordinance or Parts thereof in Conflict Herewith. Billy, could you comment to that?
Yeah, you're seeing this again, when it was, when it was presented to us, the correct amount was $1,250. When it was submitted to the state, it was turned in as 250, Shane. So this is just bringing us up with the state standards on that.
Correct. Okay. Do I have a motion for ordinance 1860?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number four, consider ordinance 1861 and ordinance amending Town Ordinance 1749 entitled and ordinance authorizing license and agreements for vendors at events and repealing all town ordinances and code sections or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
Uh, this is just updating the vendor's fees for the town events.
Understood. Do I have a motion for ordinance 1861?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Consider ordinance 1862 and ordinance amending the Town Ordinance WD-45 entitled and ordinance authorizing an increase in the customer deposit fee for the supply of residential and/or commercial water service and repealing all town ordinances and code sections or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, this is bringing some of our fees up to date. We've had, we've had a couple of incidences that we've realized as of late because of the low deposit. We had a couple of accounts basically just walk out and leave. So this is to deter that.
It's not changing the required deposit for residential homeowners or commercial owners, but it is going to increase the rate for renters.
Okay. Thank you for that, Beth and Billy. Do I have a motion for ordinance 1862?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Consider ordinance 1863 and ordinance amending the St. John zoning ordinance and providing for a zoning change for the property development commonly known as Heartland Park Expansion Site on White Oak Avenue and 109th Avenue in the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana. This is on second reading.
So this is the, the zone, a simple zone change from R2 to public. And it's only, oh, go ahead, Jerry. Am I interrupting?
No, I was just going to ask, because I don't ever remember this being rezoned to an RC2PUD. I thought this was all, came in as R1.
No, it didn't. It was a.
It was changed.
It was R2, I think, back in May, back in May.
Of this year?
2024.
2024.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's 25, yeah, 24.
Okay. Or, do I have a motion for ordinance 1863? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number seven, consider ordinance 1864 and ordinance of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the town to issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds relating to a commercial development project to be located in the St. John Economic Development Area 1, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second, but I also have a question. More? The approving, let's say, where does that go? Approving, yeah, the other, the other areas, is that all going to part, still be part of Economic Development Area 1?
So this is related to the jewel development?
Mm-hmm.
It's individual allocation area when, when we're talking about the bonds.
Okay, but it's only for that area?
Correct.
Okay.
That allocation area.
Thank you. Or I have a motion. Do I have a second? I did second, yes. Okay, very good. Thank you, Jerry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number nine, Town Council action. One, consider use variation for 10081 Wicker Avenue to allow outdoor dining. Billy, can you comment to that?
Yeah, this is for the Arcadia expansion. I don't know the actual user for it, but Sophia is requesting a outdoor dining area for it. area for it.
Uh, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Uh, Wayne would be first, and Jerry would be a second.
Oh, sure.
Are you, you're okay with that?
Sure.
All right, Jerry, you're second. Do I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number two, consider agreement with Harris Law Firm P.C. for Police Commission. Um, I think that this is something that we were gonna maybe look into just a little bit deeper, uh, hoping that maybe we should just defer it at this time.
I'll make a motion to defer, so we can have an executive session on it and discuss it further.
I'll, I'll support that.
I'm gonna amend the motion, I'm, make my own. I'll make a motion to also defer, uh, based upon, um, an executive session, um, with a, our town attorney and a member of the Police Commission present.
I'll support that amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Jerry, we have a second by.
The motion was Mr. Jorgensen.
I'm sorry.
I seconded it.
Seconded it, all right. It's Mr. Jorgensen and Jerry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Item three, consider.
Well, you have to approve the motion, we were just voted on the amendment. The amendment passed, now you have to vote on the motion, which is to cons.
Unless he withdraws the original motion. He can withdraw the original motion.
Well, he amended it, so are we good passing it like that, or do we need to?
Technically, either there has to be an amendment of the motion.
So do, do both. Well, we voted on that, now we'll do it on the.
To defer.
Okay, so, motion to defer the meeting as amended by Councilman Jorgensen. Do I have a motion?
And seconded by Councilman Switz.
That motion was already made previously.
Yep, okay.
And supported.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Sorry.
Uh, item three, consider agreement with Baker Tilly for arbitrage services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Billy, do you wanna comment on this?
Yeah, on number four, I'd ask that it be deferred, uh, Mr. President, there is some language, uh, that is still needed, so at this time, I'd ask you to defer it till our next meeting.
Okay, item four, for Billy, could we consider deferring this? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second to defer for the striker equipment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Number five, motion to reduce vendor fees for daily grind for the Easter egg hunt event from one hundred dollars to fifty dollars per park department request. Billy, can you comment on this?
Yeah, so the event that we're having is an all-day event, but it's broken up in the beginning part of the day in the morning and then in the later afternoon, so they'll be there all day, but since the events are so spaced apart, we're asking for, uh, a fifty-dollar fee instead of a hundred for them.
All right. Do I have a motion to reduce the vendor fee?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Motion to accept bid from Grimmer Construction for Wells 8 and 9 not to exceed three million one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, Wayne, would you like to comment on this at all, any?
I think it's finally gonna get done, it's, it's taken a while, um, but it's under recommendation, so I, I say we do it and.
I zone for it.
Make a motion that we pass it.
All right, Wayne's making a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to zero. Moving number 10, reports and correspondence, uh, Town Council, gentlemen, any reports or correspondence?
I just have one thing, at the, uh, at the NIRPC meeting, um, they announced a workshop, they're having two workshops coming up that might be of interest. Uh, first workshop, and one's on April 8, but it's, uh, for sensible planning and land use decisions, um, and they're recommending that to town, uh, and city partners, elected officials, BZA members, uh, local developers and builders, and legal professionals, uh, in land use. And the second workshop is on April 22, um, which is sensible tools for stormwater management and green infrastructure, so just thought I'd share that information with anybody that's interested. And it's at NIRPC, it's N-I-R-P-C dot org.
And is that at the, uh, the center down there by?
In Portage, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you for that, anyone else?
Yeah, I wanna, probably should've brought up earlier, um, the house that burned up, Billy, on the Jallette. Did we get appraisals on that?
The appraisals have been ordered, they haven't come in yet.
They're not, okay. I know you're working with the homeowner on that.
Correct.
All right, no one else than, uh, Billy, Town Manager?
I was just gonna ask.
I'm sorry.
One second. I was wondering if Wayne was gonna make a motion, um, for a resolution, um, to, to move the meeting minutes to be transcribed verbatim, um, like a court reporter, um, and if so, I'd like comments from Beth's office, I think who's in charge of that, um, as to what that cost is, but that's gonna have to be done by a motion if it's going to cost more now than it's currently costing, just to get to your point.
I don't actually do the minutes.
You farm it out.
Like a secretary.
Yeah.
Or an administrative assistant does the minutes.
That would be part of their duties, right, if it's assigned to them?
I mean, Billy's administrative assistant does the minutes.
Correct. Uh, each board has, uh, someone on there who, who does the minutes as we're presenting now. Um, I will have to look into, again, if we want them verbatim, uh, what, what that owns.
What did that cost us before, because they were doing it for the last year and a half?
Correct.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
I can get that information for you there.
I will say, for the many times that I have to review minutes to check motions and things of that nature, it is much easier and way more concise to read a memorandum of minutes versus something verbatim, and if I, if I need to go back and listen to it, then I, you know, you guys have been.
It's recorded.
It's recorded. You, you've, the town has been ahead of the curve in recording our meetings on YouTube well before it was ever a requirement. It's just becoming a requirement, I think July of this year, and so it's a nice tool to be able to go back and actually listen.
If need be.
If need be, but the shorter minutes are easier to sit through, in my opinion, not that I did make the decision.
It's just my opinion that it's nicer.
Well, we'll let Billy look into that.
I'll report back to you guys.
You okay with that, Christian?
Oh, yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah.
Knowledge of power.
Get, get some more information on that, that would be helpful. I appreciate your input, Beth. Uh, about that, Billy, any comments?
No, no other reports of correspondence.
Uh, Clerk Treasurer, Beth?
No, I'm, I'm getting ready to invite you all. Baker Tilly sent a meeting invite for legislative, um, decisions that will impact our municipality. It's a webinar that they invited us all to attend in mid-April, so I think it might be something that, if you're able to join in, that you might want to consider.
Do you know what the time is approximately?
I think it's 1:30 PM our time.
Okay.
Well, they, they might even have replays on that, too.
I can check.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
And send out an email.
I will.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Sounds good. Anything else? If not, then, uh, move to item 11, uh, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.